Six o'clock on June 8th, 2023, and I'll call the June 8th Special Meeting and Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Madam Secretary, you please call the roll.
Debbie Moore.
Here.
Cynthia Meyer. Oh, sorry. Ishmael Harris. Carrie Kayler.
Here.
Patrice Parsons. Judah Ross.
Present.
Kristy Coke.
Here.
David Barrow.
Here.
Ashley Henson.
Here.
Thank you.
And we do have a quorum, and before we get into business, as we usually do, we recognize our new member and ask her to introduce herself to us and let us know what your background is and why you're interested in joining this group.
Absolutely. So I'm Ashley Henson. I am an Austin native, but I have lived in Bastrop for four years now. My career is really in revenue technology and operations within private equity and investment firms. And I got interested in the P&amp;Z through a few different members across the community and feel like it's a great way to make an impact in establishing the growth plan for Bastrop, so I'm excited to contribute.
Thank you, and welcome. Item two, citizen comments. This is when anyone would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda, and I see we have one person signed up to speak. It's Deborah Jones. If you'll come to the microphone and give us your name and address. You'll have three minutes. You don't have anything listed as to what item you want to talk. You just said informative, so I took it.
Can you step up to the mic, please?
Yeah.
I don't think the mic's on.
I'm Deborah Jones. I live at 1606 Pecan Street, and I've owned a piece of property for four years and, well, little over five years, up on the hill where the water tower is, if you head down Highway 21, where the old rodeo inn used to be. The first year that I owned that property, I was told repeatedly by the planning department that I had to tear my historic building down, and it wasn't until I got the historic commission involved that I got relief and was allowed to restore my building on my property. I also own a water tap on that property, and for five years I could not get it connected. I just got it connected about a month ago. My property is impacted by TechDOT, the County Conservation District, Fish and Wildlife, as well as the city of Bastrop because we have the Houston Toad, so we have a very unique piece of property. Once we worked through the process of rescuing our historic building, we then were advised by planning and zoning to present to, excuse me, by the planning department, to present to planning and zoning to have a permit waived by the county conservation district. It's many thousands of dollars, and we were specifically told by our surveyor and the county that we didn't need it. And we spent about a year in that process, and P&amp;Z did rule in my favor, but the guidelines that you gave us were with the wrong federal department. So it didn't matter because planning and zoning specifically told us that they didn't care what you did. They were still going to force us to get the permit, or we couldn't move forward. Another specific challenge that we've had is utilities, and this, Carrie, I'm just going to speak specifically to your comments about equity. So we wanted utilities. We have a building up on the northeast corner of our property. We were told that we had to run our utilities down the west, the south, and then back down the east, which was over 1,200 feet, so that we could make electricity available to any other person who thought that they might want to develop. There was nobody in line to develop at a cost of over $130,000. I would like to point out that the electric pole is less than 10 feet from my building, so I have a real problem with that. I don't think it's my responsibility, and I can cite law, that says it's not my responsibility to provide utilities for other people. So another thing that we've been challenged with, and this is all because it's in the B-3 code, okay? The city had no ability to work with us because there's no administrative authority for them to work with us, thus the PDD. And I'm one of many, many people who have had certain challenges. They're not the same as mine. All of our properties are very different. We were asked multiple times to, because I've been asked to be here informatively, I would ask that you please allow me some time to finish. I'm almost done. Thank you.
Thirty more seconds.
So we were asked to connect a city sewer. We were going to have to bore through public land, which is illegal, to connect to a public sewer system, which we were well outside of the boundaries of, instead of being allowed to have septic, again, the code. It was going to be at a cost of, again, over $130,000. I'd like to point out that I have a 350-square-foot building that I want electricity, water, and sewer to. 350 square feet. So my last, my lost income to date for not being allowed to develop is $780,000. The delays that are being imposed by y'all not agreeing to the PDD are going to cost me another $52,000.
Please wrap up.
My hard costs to date just for financing and so forth are over $130,000. I'm here, Ms. Parsons, at your request. As a developer, an individual person, not a target, not an industry, not a corporation, but as an individual, I'm at close to $1 million, and to your point of me not wanting to abide by codes and eroding the code.
Ma'am, ma'am.
That's not the case.
Please wrap up.
I'm trying to do that.
You're not going, we're not here to.
Thank you. I was asked to be here for information. I appreciate it, Ms. Parsons.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item three, the workshop. Discuss and workshop on an ordinance amending the Bastrop Building Block B-3 Code, Article 3.1, place type zoning districts, and adding Article 3.4, Planned Development District, for the purpose of considering planned development districts within the city of Bastrop. Madam City Manager.
Good afternoon, Commission. So we are picking up our discussion from last week regarding planned development districts. So in your packet was a, an updated PowerPoint from last time, also the PDD primer that I gave as a handout last time is also included electronically as the staff report. So as we talked about, that the PDD was in your prior ordinance, it was removed out of the B-3, and this is an introduction to bring it back. Its purpose is flexibility. Its purpose is creativity. Its purpose is administrative relief, to get through a code without needing 27 warrants, working through intents of the code, making sure all of our master transportation, our water plans, sewer plans, all of that works, and we are looking at a project from a holistic level at a 50,000-foot level. So why a PDD? There are things in the code today that do not make sense. They don't make sense. We could draw them out. I can give you any example that you would like, and I'm happy to do that today off the corner of my brain of the projects I've seen come through the door. But I don't.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
When you talk about codes, are you talking about the existing codes or simply B-3?
B-3.
Okay.
And certain segments of the B-3, as it relates to the street grid system, for example, as it relates to some of the first layer, parking in the first layer, for example. There are things in the code that are wonderful. There are things in the, in the code that make residential sparkle. There are things in the code that also are hurtful to residential. There are things in the code that are hurtful to existing residents. We've gone through the nonconforming discussion. We've gone through all of that. So it's an attempt. What we're doing is attempts to fix those pain points. This is one of the pain points, and the pain point is flexibility and rigidity in the code as it exists today. Without undoing the code in its entirety, this is a method to get through the code. I will tell everybody, and I'll probably, that'll be my dying words, is there's always a way through a regulation. Never around, there is a way through, and that is normally through staff, a legislative body, and then a legislative action, and ultimately the court. But you can get through it. It might be expensive, but you can get through it. So this has been upheld in court, and it really is related to a process. We have to codify this particular process, but it is related to a process. So I think we missed this one the last time. I went and watched the tape again, and I went and said, hmm, okay, what maybe wasn't understood at the last meeting? So again, if we go back to why do we have development regulations? Well, the law says we need to have development regulations to create orderly development. Orderly development leads to life, health, and safety issues, right? We all have an opportunity, and we all have a right to those things granted to us in the Constitution and then in our charter and all of the other underlying. We do have to keep the base standards there, whether this is a P-3, a P-4, whatever it is, the base standards are going to be underneath and overlying PDD. But it does also create its own rules, and because it's adopted by ordinance, it is very similar to a zoning change. We have to notice. We have to go through all of the mechanics of a zoning change. There is a public hearing. There is all of that. There's the opportunity for public comment. At your last meeting, you guys said you wanted to give notice to people within 500 feet of a notice, so people within 500 feet. So again, I wanted to really, really focus that the intent and the focus of the underlying zoning district will still need to be met. Where do we have common ground? So we've talked about authentic Bastrop. To me, authentic Bastrop is the environment and the natural built environment, and how do we protect that? It is stewardship of the people. The B-3 code for the residential is very expensive to develop under, very expensive. It will lead to perhaps some pockets of affordable housing because it allows specific densities. We have a proposed development right now, 3.9 acres with 42 units on it, right in the middle of town. That is a super dense area, but that's allowed in the B-3. So there are some mechanics of affordable housing, but to get to that development standard is an expensive process to go through. And so what may have been $100,000 home may not be $100,000 home at the end of it because of the process we have in place today to get to a final approval. We agree that we like unique buildings. We agree we don't like cookie cutters. We agree that there needs to be some creativity. We agree we want to protect our dark skies. We are dark sky light. We agree we don't want to have light pollution everywhere, or noise pollution for that matter. I'll remind you, form-based codes, I can't see it here, it smelt, and it's okay. So theoretically, I could have a liquor store next to my house, so long as it doesn't look any different. We want connectivity. We want to make sure we have a quality-of-life issue that says traffic isn't a cluster every time I try to get out of my driveway. We want sidewalks, where sidewalks make sense. We want landscaping. We don't want a barren area of landscaping, and we don't want to overpark. The impetus to a lot of these codes were drainage. When we began to have these conversations many, many moons ago, it was because of drainage issues. When you overpark something, obviously, there's more water runoff. Obviously, there are more things we need to take care of. So I think everybody agrees, and there may be some other points, but this is what I have heard consistently since I've been here. So I told you the last time I don't want to bring you an amendment without the process of how we would execute that amendment. So it comes in as a conceptual plan. We review it. We review conformity with all of the adopted plans. If there's a road that's supposed to be in that plan, if there is a connection that's supposed to be there, we're going to ask for the connection, or an alternate meaner method. By alternate meaner method, I mean if there's a six-lane road that is supposed to go there, but there's only two four-lane roads on either side of that, does it make sense to get a six-lane road? We may say a four-lane road is adequate. We begin to prepare it. So we go through all of that, and we begin to prepare it for public hearing. The same detailed reports that you get for a zoning case, the same detailed information on whether we have adequate water, wastewater, drainage, traffic, soup, all of it. That'll be into that report. We come to the public hearing process. Hopefully, by the time we come to the public hearing process, we've negotiated all of these little points, and maybe negotiate is the wrong term. We've agreed, in theory and in site design, that this is what we can all live with. The planning commission still has the opportunity to say, yeah, okay, staff says a four-lane road is there. I don't think so. You missed the master transportation plan for the city of Austin, or you missed the counties, or you missed Campos, or you missed whatever. A six-lainer goes there, so go back and make sure that we get six lanes. Or, yeah, we, we see that they're going to take out a 47-inch tree, like Pearl River did. We don't want you to do that. We want you to go back and make sure that there's some tree protection, and we go back to protect that tree. That's all in the public hearing process. And then, as it goes to council, council also has that opportunity to say, no, I don't agree. I don't agree. I think not only was this 47-inch oak important, but that 32-inch oak was important, too. Try to make that site development plan match that. So we're still playing ping pong, but at the end of the day, what is in that PDD may not exactly match a P-3, it may not exactly match a P-4, but it's going to be a P-3 and a half, maybe, or a P-4 and five, and P-4 and a half, P-5 and a quarter, whatever it is, because it's going to be a mixture of those things that do work. At the end of the day, it is an ordinance that establishes the district. So it'll, an ordinance does an ordinance, and an ordinance undoes an ordinance. It follows that property regardless of who buys that property, unlike a special permit, which is what I heard the other day, too, out in the community, like, oh, well, when somebody sells it, they don't have to follow the rules. No, they do. It's by ordinance. They do. So misconceptions. I heard a lot of this after the last meeting. So staff makes all of the decisions, and nobody gets to say anything. Well, that's not true. As I just explained to you, if there are things that we missed, because we're human, we may have missed it, you get to call it out, as does the council. I've also heard this is spot zoning, and the document I gave you has a misspell in it, says suit zoning. That's how old that document is, but that's how long this thing has been in place. It's not spot zoning. It is created by ordinance, matching the master transportation, water, wastewater, all of our comprehensive plans. If it was spot zoning, I would have picked something kind of right in the middle and just plopped it there, and it doesn't match anything. I have a, you know, 92-unit thing on an acre in the middle of town, but I can't get traffic in and out of it. So no, it's not spot zoning. We won't ever get good connectivity. She's going to do away with the grid system. She's going to do away with the sidewalks. We're never going to be able to connect, and we'll never get those things. Not the intent at all. Again, where it makes sense. So I will use an example of an existing project today that's in the queue. There is a project that's trying to come in front of Tractor Supply. If I met the B-3 code, those buildings would be articulated closer to the street, right, on 71. Parking's coming in from behind, but guess what? The existing site condition, there's a driveway there. If I allow that today, I've created another Chick-fil-A issue. I don't want to do that. I also don't want to build a street in the middle of a parking lot. Does it make any sense? Because it's not going to connect, connect to anything. I've got to get through Whataburger, and Joe Grady tucks over to the far left, and on the other side, I still have to go through the parking lot to get to Hassler. Makes no sense to follow the grid system in that regard. Where would I put the landscaping in that regard? Where would I do those things? It makes absolutely no sense. So is my opportunity to tell the landowner, you don't get to do that? Or I got to bring 27 warrants through, and then we're going to haggle and make the sausage here? The idea is to let us review and say, this doesn't really make sense, and here's how we can make it happen, and here is the negotiation to be able to create a viable development on a piece of property. It's an attempt to undermine the code. No, I will tell you right now that there are, as I've said before, two, I guess I'll just get to the bottom line of that. If I really wanted to do that, there were the votes on council to destroy the B-3 code when I was hired. That was a topic of discussion when I was hired. And if I really felt like I wanted to do that, I would have stood back and let that happen, because that would have made my job a whole heck of a lot easier than what we are doing today. But that's not who I am, and you'll get to know me. That is not who I am. I'm going to hold everybody the same standard I'm going to hold myself, in that we're doing the best thing that is in the interest of the community, period. So the PDD is my attempt to be Switzerland. As we work through the things that are not working in the code, what does work, and how do we incorporate those into a district that matches and makes sense? That's it. No secret operation, no dismantling, no none of that. Any questions?
Hi, I'm Pete Parsons. And I'm really sorry I'm late. I got held up in a meeting in Austin, and the traffic was horrible, so please excuse. If I understand you correctly, we can review the different issues that developers are having, like sewer, like electrical. Am I understanding you correctly by saying that we would adopt this new code and modify it to incorporate things in the B-3 code that we think is important, or can we do it in reverse?
I would say that we are going to adopt the things in the B-3 code that work, and I will use Ms. Jones's project as an example up on the hill. The way our current code reads, she would have needed to install a grid system internal to her development. So there would have been, I believe, three or four streets necessary in her development. She has a proposed development that has a mixed use. It has RVs, it has office space, it has storage. Her first primary use was to get that historic building going. The way our code works is I need an entire site plan, and I need some pretty doggone specific information. Sometimes folks aren't ready to do that, especially if I'm just trying to get out of one into the other. And so what this would do is say, okay, I hear you. This is what you want to do in its entirety. This is what we're going to marry as part of the code. Maybe the grid system doesn't work internally, but let's make sure the connectivity on the site matches. Let's make sure that, you know, perhaps this of the B-3 code doesn't match, but this segment does. Let's make sure that we keep that, and which are the good things that work for everybody? Can I do it in reverse? Can I bring a PDD to destroy an underlying district? I can't, because the underlying district is supposed to remain intact. That's how we get away from spot zoning.
Another thing you mentioned was a liquor store next to a home. Explain to me why that works.
That is in the current code today. So today, our code is form-based.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
So when you all are considering working through a PDD, is there some sort of infrastructure to it, or some sort of paradigm, that as you're having these negotiations and you're gaining experience, that it then allows for, I don't know, amendments or something to happen so that the public can be educated about how to work through the process more easily and efficiently in the future? Is this what it's proposing?
That would be the hope. My, my goal would be if we continue to see the certain same things be brought up every time we're having a discussion with a developer, then obviously, those are things we need to touch in the code for one reason or another, whether it's the code itself or the process to get through to that particular point in time.
Can you give us an example of, of a PDD in another community that has done that, that has solved a solution?
Mostly, a lot of the mixed use that you're going to find, northern central Texas. So for example, if the underlying zoning code in this case is a, is a P-6, and that's more intense, but they can't meet the drainage criteria, and so there's no other relief other than some type of amendment or a super expense on drainage, what this would allow us to do is say, okay, your alternate method of compliance may be a portion draining to a retention pond and a portion being held onsite in your tank and slowly released and reused for irrigation, and by the way, we could possibly give you credit for that, so that you can still do the density, so you can still have what you were trying to build, but there's no detrimental impact to everybody else. I'll use the 42-unit subdivision coming up. If there was, she's, drainage is the big issue trying to get that development through. If there is an alternate method of compliance where she maybe did not have to put a road in the middle of one of the segments, and that decreases the drainage, and she could put more green space, but maybe get a different layout to still get 42 units an acre, that's very much a possibility as well.
I had a question. Can you speak to how the PDD could potentially alleviate any current financial or administrative burden for the city and how they currently have to navigate this process?
Ms. Jones shared some costs. I'm not sure. We're going to run some financial models, but I will tell you, right now, our process runs linear. So I need to see a neighborhood regulating plan and/or some version of a preliminary plat, and with that, I need to see a certain set of drainage standards. You guys approve that? I'm married to it. I haven't dated anybody else. I don't know what other site plan may work. I am married to that plan. So I go and spend the money one time on drainage. I go, I start doing my plans, I engage engineers again, ooh, there's a site condition. Maybe there's a recharge area in that, and I can't get past that in the built environment. In order for me to make changes to the layout that I'm now married to, I've got to come back. And to come back means I have to start over with that initial design and change those. Let's say I do that. Let's say I get a divorce, and I'm, I'm able to redo it again, and I want to move into the next level. Okay, now my site condition, it might be rock, it might be sand, it might be something else, and I need to make amendments to that, too. I can't, our current process makes you come back to 1A, 1B, 1C. So it, it is a very protracted process. A PDD makes us look at it from a 50,000-foot level in a holistic way. I know this is required, and I know preliminarily the drainage meets the criteria, the transportation. I know I can serve it with water, and I know I can serve it with wastewater. I know I'm going to get a park. I know I'm going to get this, that, and the other. That is what's being approved. As we work through, it may be that 42 homes didn't work. It may be that only 38 work. They don't have to come back and get a divorce and start the process over. That is the, time is money, and, you know, I can't quantify that for a developer, because it depends on how large the project is.
That's helpful. Thank you.
I'm sorry I'm hung up on this marriage between.
You're okay.
PDD and the B-3. Why can't we take the P-3, B-3, and add elements of the PDD to the P-3?
That's what we're doing. The PDD will sit inside the B-3.
I got it. Okay, thank you.
Yes. So it'll be P-1, P-2, P-3, P-4, P-5, PDD.
So why not just amend the B-3 code itself?
This is what this is. This is an amendment to the B-3.
Can you speak more to the public hearing process? Like, is that something that's going to be held at City Hall?
It would be here, just, just like this.
And you mentioned P&amp;Z and City Council have an opportunity to speak. Is that, are these going to be put on the agenda if there's upcoming projects, or this is just if we bring it up?
No, it has to be approved here, so you have an opportunity to discuss it and dissect it here.
So for each, for each amendment?
So in, in theory, the way it should work is, so we bring a PDD, and we say, Ms. Lee's project meets the, has an underlying zoning of P-6, and it has these other components that a little bit are P-1 on. Now, let me go back the other way. Underlying zoning of P-5, for example, but there's some P-6 stuff in there as well, and so we work it out, and then we come to you and say, okay, her PDD is described as this. It varies from the P-5 here, 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 and here. This is how we are going to meet the intent of the code, here, 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 and here. This is where the important pieces match, here, 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 and here, and so we recommend approval. Conversely, we can say, hmm, we gave our best shot. There is still an issue with connectivity. This is the best shot the developer wants to take. Staff is recommending denial. So.
And with the current process, they would need a warrant for each of those?
Yes.
Instead of doing it as one thing?
They would need a warrant for each, each one.
Yeah, my, my concern about this at the last meeting was simply.
Yeah, my concern about this at the last meeting was simply that I've served on this commission for two and a half years, and we have had, I believe, four or five projects, development projects, that have come to us with warrants in those two and a half years. We had, we also had, you know, a couple of requests for zoning change and other things. But as far as specifically projects that came to us with warrants, I think we've had four. And we worked it out a peer, and I think we did a really good, fair job of doing that. The one that I'm thinking about that, first, it was the First National Bank project over on spring. Thank you. And, you know, they came to us with, I want to say, 12 warrants, mostly driveway-related and how the ingress egress through the banking lanes would work. There were three meetings for it. They failed to show up for one of the meetings. So, we covered it in two meetings. We were able to reach a conclusion that was fair to them, was fair to the community. We got all of the concerns about, you know, whether there were traffic concerns coming in and out. We spoke to the city's engineer, we spoke to their engineer. I, my primary concern about this is just simply that I don't feel like there have been that many that have come to us. And so, I'm wondering, are there people getting just mired down who aren't getting brought to P&amp;Z? Because if so, then, you know, I think we all want to see them and do the work of going through the projects. Another project that came, that had a considerable number of warrants, was Burleson East. And I think it was, the discussions that we had regarding their warrants were really important, and this board made a decision and went to council, and council overrode us as they are wanted to. So, that's, you know, that's fine, that's how it works. So, I'm, we had a similar allowance in the city where I used to work, and I thought that it was something that they should have utilized more. I see the benefit of it. I'm just, if there have only been four projects that came to us with warrants in the last two and a half years, I don't know, I'm failing to see the, why this is critical right now when we've done so much other work to get those small, one-off projects to provide the outlet for that, to get those through. So, that's where I would appreciate to be further enlightened.
Process is painful. Three meetings, dissecting it at the dais in front of the public is painful. There is work of staff that should be accompanied that. The way the code is written, there is no administrative authority for staff to make a decision. There is, I shouldn't say no, because there's, that's not true. There is limited authority for the staff, the director, the city manager to make a decision. It has to come and be exposed here. That really is tying the hands of staff, who are the professionals who should be working through the process. Further, the way the statute, the way the code is written today, because I do have to marry something, the equivalent that I'm going to use is I've asked for your hand to be married, I've got to argue with your father on how I'm going to do that, I finally get your hand in marriage, and then you and I have a conversation and we decide we don't really want to be married. I've already aired all of our dirty laundry and all of the public stuff in the public. And again, some of those things are best done behind closed doors with the professionals and us bringing you our best effort to make things happen and make things work in hopefully as expeditiously a time as possible. Staff is working under the shot clock. You know that shot clock very well. Once it gets here...
Maybe some people don't. Could you just enlighten with the members?
Yes. So, House Bill 3187, I think if I've slept since then, requires things to have action within a certain timeframe. When I first started in this business, that was only related to plats, subdivisions of property. That was back in 2002. Now, it is a plat, a plan, an agreement, anything has to have action, whether approval or denial, within 30 days. Lack of action is an automatic approval. So, acting through that process and putting processes in place where we do deny it because it isn't ready is better than putting it on the agenda and having it dissected up here. So, there's a method to the madness of allowing staff the opportunity to work through a process. As it stands today, we accept every other Monday, with the exception of building permits. We accept every other Monday, and we go through a pretty detailed review process, but we deny pretty quickly, because we know how it ends up here. And maybe that's why you haven't seen as many as you have, because it's a painful process.
And it's 30 days from the date that you accepted?
30 days from the date is considered accepted.
Accepted.
Can you elaborate on why it's not beneficial to have discussions like this in public?
It is beneficial. It's beneficial to determine what didn't work or what perhaps is not in the community's best interest. But as professionals, you've entrusted us to ensure that we are executing the comprehensive plan. You've entrusted us to ensure that we are executing all of the plans underneath that and all of our actions relate to that. There's a stripping away of authority to the staff and undermining of the staff, if you will. If we bring you a product that meets, that checks all of those boxes, and we don't get to do that, we've got to bring you a product as submitted where we tell you what is wrong with it, period. Even though I might have a solution, I got to bring you everything that's wrong with it, and this body makes a determination on whether to grant a warrant or not.
Did that answer your question? Okay. Anybody else? Do you have any concern, given that all politics is local, that there could be in some future instances where some political pressure could be applied to staff to rule one way or another?
That's in every city, every single day. We can count the tea leaves. And we do. But that's why it's a public process here, that no matter what gets, no matter what gets encouraged, I will say, at the staff level, it still has the light of day here. Now, if I was bringing you something that said staff gets to administratively approve anything under five acres or anything under, you know, blah, 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 then yes, I would have that concern. But, no. And the reality of it is, staff is pretty afraid to take action. Truly. That's why it's me standing up here. I have a parachute, they don't.
Yeah.
And a flat jacket, right? Any other questions?
Bouncing off of what Debbie was saying, is it safe to assume that the PDD process applies regardless of the size of the project at hand?
Yes.
Okay, so it goes through the process. And then, another question I had was around the flexibility. It feels like we're talking a lot about maybe making amendments to the existing E3 codes through the PDD. Is it safe to assume that there's a little bit of a bidirectional flexibility at the benefit of the developer, but also potentially for the city?
Yes, I would say that is absolutely a fair question. They're living and breathing it. They're having to try to execute it, and staff's trying to go, yeah, it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense, does it? But that's how it is, it's written. And really, from a staff's perspective, we can't deviate from what our lane is unless I'm given specific authority to deviate. So, unless there is a rule that says staff has authority to do that, they're going to bring this to you. And, you know, we get into the, again, who's the professional? Who should we allow to help make the decisions easier, so to speak, or make the decisions clearer, or really make those recommendations to the code? The code is supposed to be a living and breathing document, and it has not been. It has not been. The amendments only started recently. We've not made any major changes to the code. It is obvious. There are major sticking points. Not so much to what I'm going to call the code, but there's a lot of sticking points in the process on how we execute that code. So, does the code get a bad rap when it doesn't deserve it at times? Yes, I don't disagree. But there are other times when it just doesn't make sense to do that. And this is completely from a, you know, been doing this as long as I have. If we're going to go back to what was the issue at hand, what were we trying to solve? We said we were trying to solve sustainability issues, drainage issues. What has been executed and implemented here may be sustainable, but it certainly is not affordable. It is not affordable. So, if we want authentic Bastrop, you must understand there will be a price to pay for that, and that is really conversion and gentrification of some areas where folks are not able to afford what the requirements are. The non-conforming piece we just brought allows some relief, but there's a house on Barbara Way that could not be rebuilt the way it was before. It had to be rebuilt in a B3 standard with a wraparound garage when nothing else around it looks that way. Nothing else around it looks that way. Those are the things that don't make sense. But the living part of that document has not been visited enough. It's on life support right now.
Sylvia, if I may, just kind of adding on and driving home the point to answer that question. Hypothetically imagine as if staff, what they've been trying to do is fit a square peg into a round hole, and round hole is the best, highest use of the land. What the PDD can allow is us to kind of round off those corners so that it does fit. And maybe we're not rounding off every corner, maybe it's just one, but also give staff that ability to repurpose those corners or find other ways through the code in which you can make the project work. So, it's not completely getting rid of those, I would say, parts or provisions of the code, but maybe so making it make more sense for this specific project. To that point, I think David had brought up something earlier. Once we see enough of those pain points brought to us, it brings forth the actual amendment to the B3 code, which doesn't overhaul it, but it just tweaks it and fixes it so that it no longer becomes a problem. And then, you probably won't be seeing PDDs related to that issue in the future. And I think one thing that this is trying to accomplish from a staff level is preparing for the future, which, as we all know, Bastrop is growing at immense rates, and it just allows staff another tool in which to see and manage that in the right way.
So, why can't, I know it'd be laborious, but why couldn't, can't we look at the specific things that are causing the problems and amend the B3 code around those things?
We are. That's taken some time. The slide that I sent on common ground to go through the segments of the code, so here's the difference. The B3 code may work for certain infill areas, it might work for certain areas of town where we want a specific density, we don't want a lot size, but it may not work for a developer who does want large lot subdivisions, who does want to do an 80-foot lot, who does want depth, who does want that country feel in some of our outline areas. There's a method to get through that. It's a laborious and painful method, but I haven't really changed the code, per se. The pieces of the code that really don't work really are related to the commercial segment and the mixed-use segment because of the requirements in there. And I'm working on amending the code and bringing you amendments, it's just taking a little bit longer. So, we had the consultant go through and go through process and go through some regulatory changes and go through some, well, not changes, but go through the regulatory environment and suggest some items. The PDD, for me, is a short-term solution that allows us to continue to work on amendments as they need to happen without one side or the other imploding. You know, we are going to stick a flag in the ground and say, nope, it's the B3, or no soup for you, too bad. Or, we're going to stick a flag on the ground on this side and say, it's imploding at all, we're going back to the 2019. It's holding really two series of groups to be able to meet in the middle, because I do believe we have common ground. But the code is, it's so intertwined, just like the puzzle piece, when I change one thing, I'm changing something else. And instead of ending up with a Frankenstein code, I do want to be methodical about what we change and make sure I didn't inadvertently do something that I didn't really intend to do. Plus, the code amendments, each one of those amendments comes with a public comment and a public process, period. So, if we take one chapter at a time, imagine that's, you know, a couple of workshops, a couple of public meetings, it's a lengthy process. We're going to get there, because we have to get there, because we've identified some pretty serious issues, but to go back and tell the community, this is the picture that you wanted, and this is the picture we're enforcing, without the community really understanding what that means in terms of who comes, who doesn't come, how much it costs, and what we're leaving on the table, is also a part of the dialogue. So, short answer, yes, we're amending the code, and we will be bringing those amendments forward.
Well, I have some similar concerns that Debbie has about, you know, what if you leave? Let's say you're our ally, you're going to do it exactly the right way. We change the code, you're doing it in a way that's, you know, sustainable, makes sense, is beautiful, and then you decide to leave, and we get a new...
Which I might tomorrow.
We get a new city manager in.
Depending on how the meeting goes.
We get a new city manager in, and that person has a completely different idea about how things go, and now we're locked into something that might not be what we believe the community would support. So, that's why I'm saying, I realize that it would be very laborious, but if we looked at the major things that the commercial and multifamily are having problems with in order to make it work for them, we looked at those things first and figured out a way to amend the B3 code rather than adopting this PDD, I'm wondering if that would be more palatable?
So, I think your PDD is a way to salvage the good things that aren't necessarily going to be amended out, because remember, the underlying zoning characteristic still is in place. You still have that character district that shows what you wanted to look like. The PDD is simply, as I tell you guys about zoning, it's ethereal, it's floating on that piece of property and it's kind of stuck to that property. An amendment to the code may take away that, and so, and you may end up with something you don't want. That's why, for me, the middle ground during this entire process is, we all agree there are things that do work. We agree. So, let's capitalize on the things that do work while we're amending the rest of the stuff that doesn't, without throwing the baby out with the bathwater.
Okay. As long as staff's administrative approval of certain things is brought to this body to be able to look at and say, yeah, we agree, maybe we don't agree?
Maybe I shouldn't call it administrative approval, maybe I should call it administrative recommendations, because that's what it is. I haven't given an approval, because I don't have authority in the statute or in the charter or in the ordinance to give an approval.
I think that terminology might be hanging up some people, because it's like a staff recommendation, and we're under no obligation...
Correct.
...to accept or not. So, as long as that safeguard is still there, that we can look at that regulation, and we're going to be having town hall meetings and public hearings and the like, so we can see the light of day on these changes, I feel better about it.
I think it's important, and I don't think we've discussed this yet, I think it's important to see when staff brings the recommendation, if we vote to approve this, if they come to us with a recommendation, I think it's important for the community to see what, where the negotiations were. You know, we don't need to see all of the sausage being made necessarily, but what... You know, we don't need to see all of the sausage being made necessarily, but what, but to have a bit of context, you know, okay, we worked to do this, to have a utility easement on this side because it didn't make sense to send the utilities all the way around the property, you know, for that extra expense, so this is, you know, this is what, you know, this was the easy way to get us to that, to that decision. I think there should be...
I'm happy to work with you as the chair on what that report should look like, what you guys want to see as a body. Because I do want to amend the zoning report, period, because I think we're missing supercritical information anyway, like, yeah, we can serve it water, but we're running out of water pretty, you know, there are, I think, certain informations, infrastructure pieces that are not included in today's zoning report.
Right, and I think that's important for all of us to know, especially infrastructure, because this town, you know, has had, has been working really hard to improve its infrastructure over the last eight years. When those kinds of decisions are made, I think it's important that we all get the benefit of that knowledge so that we can be smarter going forward and have that information at hand when we do need to change a code.
I think the council took an amazingly brave step when they called on for the moratorium because there were things that were not working. There were communities that were getting flooded every year, so we needed to do something and we stopped and took a look. We developed some very stringent drainage requirements, but like the example you gave, Sylvia, we might have some retainage, we might have some that you give credit for and other ways to work it. And if that gives you the flexibility to say, okay, you don't have to all make one retention pond, you might be able to meet the criteria, but in different ways.
Mosquito haven, is what those ponds become.
Yeah. So if that is the goal and that's what we're working for.
I do, I do, and I think this right here, so I don't know how many of you have been to Dripping Springs or how many of you have been, I lived in Kyle, so I kind of went down in that area. And you see a lot of the tanks, you see a lot of water conservation, you see a lot of storage and reuse so that they can maintain the environment, they can maintain the trees. The parking ratios are not as high as some of what I've seen in other areas because you don't want over-parking. That exacerbates your drainage too. So it's a combination, it's, which is why it's difficult, it's a one, two, three, four punch in several different areas. I am heartbroken that Pearl River mowed down 75 acres of trees. Heartbroken. They will owe over a million dollars in tree mitigation fees. Heartbroken. But that's the density that the B3 code allows. That development was labored as, this is a B3 picture-perfect development that's going to happen here. And when you talk about sustainability, it's not just sustainability from a financial perspective because I can do a rate of return on that. I'm talking about sustainability for the environment as well. Those trees meant something. They are protecting drainage, they are protecting water quality. And if we're going to sit here and say, yep, because that's what we want built, then yeah, this is not the community for me. Not at all. Not if that's what we want Bastrop to look like.
Anyone have any more questions? Thank you. So if, we're not making a recommendation?
No, no, this is a workshop. So we are at item...
Going on to item 3B?
Yes, I don't have another slide, so that's where we are.
To discuss a town hall meeting to revisit the B3 code on June 15 from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
So part of the town hall was Commissioner Parsons asking, we want to hear from the development community, we want to hear what's going on. I have been hearing from the development community, trust you me, I've been hearing from the development community. So it is an opportunity to take our first stab at this living, breathing document and hear, hear the execution of this document, what it means and how it does or doesn't work. I've got examples I can give you across the city, the, you know, houses who couldn't and some of the relief we've just given, but it's an opportunity for you to hear it and the council to hear it. It's a called meeting by the city council, next door at the convention center. You guys, we posted a potential quorum because you are all welcome to be there. You will not convene a meeting, but you are welcome to be there. You are also welcome to give public input as well at that point in time. So that's next Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00.
Thank you. Is there anything else we need to, need or wish to discuss? Then we will move on to item four.
I have one question. Will that meeting be recorded?
Recorded and livestreamed.
Cool. But if you're not there, you can't ask a question or make a comment. Makes a difference. We move on to item four. I'll accept a motion. That means adjournment. Somebody adjourn!
Motion to adjourn?
May I second?
All in favor? Let's go home. Thank you, everybody.